Oh, that's better.
Welcome to everyone. I'm calling in to to order the Tuesday, June 3, 2025, Haldane Board of Education Business Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, President Clements. Here, Vice President Valentine, Trustee Cooper.
Here.
Trustee Clementson.
Here.
Um, so I don't believe we have any modifications to the agenda, so maybe we have the recommended action to approve the agenda, please?
It resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agenda as written.
May we have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second. All those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? So our next meeting, the board's next meeting, will be a workshop meeting on June 17, 2025. We're going to be starting a little bit earlier at 6:15 because after we call the meeting into order, we'll then go into a recess to celebrate all, everyone who's getting tenure. It's a sort of an annual tradition that we have for the last meeting of the year. And in addition, the workshop topic for that evening will be the STEAM program planning update. So that's very exciting in light of our upcoming capital project. Um, we have some great presentations tonight, and so I'm going to be really brief with my comments, just to say that there are many great things happening in the district. June is a very busy time as school comes to a close. And so an enormous thank you to all of the staff, faculty, and administrators who are putting in extra work to make sure everything goes smoothly and students are having just lots and lots of great individual activities. So that's it for me. Mr. Robano?
Okay, just some brief updates. I did in my Friday update mention that transitioning with our incoming superintendent, Dr. Duffy, is going very well. To date, I've had five half-day transition meetings. Her district has been very generous in allowing her to be here on site. We've done some work remotely. Just this afternoon, we met with our school attorney, so I introduced her and we talked about different topics that we were, you know, dealing with in transition. Additionally, next week she will be here. We are, Dr. Kation is transitioning our incoming special education director. Dr. Duffy plans to join us as well. I also believe she will be attending graduation and she's trying to also join us for a few other events. There's a lot of enthusiasm and we've covered a broad range of topics. I mean, all the important things, capital project, our new pre-K program, which is something very exciting, future goals like transitioning to a five to eight middle school. We really covered a lot of ground and that's been very positive. Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, just to add to that, um, Dr. Duffy has been so responsive and responsible at the same time, I know she's managing, you know, a very demanding job in her current district to make sure that she hits the ground running. So even though July 1st is her first day, that's going to be the the day that the board has this reorganization meeting. And then we plan to, she's she's working with me, um, to plan the board's retreat for the summer. So it is really very much appreciated, all the work that she's doing.
And just a few student recognitions. As Peggy said, this is a time of year where there are a lot of celebrations, a lot of recognition. And I I've been so impressed that we've actually, there's so many that we had to split up a bit. But Peggy, Tom Cunningham and I attended the Carol F. Johnson Scholastic Achievement Dinner, which has been going on for 57 years. It's very exciting. It brings together all of the valedictorian and salutatorian graduates from around the region. I want to say there's about 85 districts represented. So board presidents, superintendents, administration, as well as students. So our star students, I just want to give a shout out, valedictorian Mark Furpo, as well as salutatorian Scotia Hartford were there. And what a pleasure just to learn about their their college plans, their career and life plans, and just two super impressive kids. And and I look forward to hearing more from them at at graduation. I'm sure they're planning very exciting speeches. Then last week I did attend the senior dinner at the Factoria at Charles Point. It was my first time there. Senior, our high school senior of the year is Dominica Awanash. And it was just a great relaxed get-together of all of our seniors. Families joined us, recognizing students and and signing yearbooks. And and it's just a wonderful tradition. And it was it was something very nice and I think unique to to our district. I've never seen that before. And lastly, Senator Rob Rawson was here on May 30th. And he presented awards, a youth leadership awards to five students. And I just again want to give them a shout out, juniors Alexander Del Pozo, Louisa Schimming, and Owen Sullivan Hope. And also seniors Robert Frymark and Scotia Hartford. They all were personally presented with an award from the senator for their leadership in the community, in the school, and for outstanding scholarships. So that that was a great honor and he spent about 30 minutes talking to them about leadership and giving back to their community. So congratulations to all of those students and maybe that's a perfect lead into another student recognition that we have this evening. Dr. Clements, would you like to introduce?
Oh, sure. Have to. So yeah, so who we we have here tonight is, um, Casper Daisley and his family, along with Dr. Greg Brown, Assistant Superintendent of PNW Bosse's, Josh Thompson, the Bosse's Communication Specialist, Mike Holvin, Fox from the the Fox Middle High School Supervisor, and Martin Kearns, a teacher. Although is everyone, I think that's everybody is here. Great. Yeah. So if you all would please come up and make this presentation, we'd really appreciate it. These are always the.
You're the star of the evening, my friend. So I I've got the privilege of starting and I just, I wrote a couple of notes here. I just wanted to say good evening.
Do you mind standing?
Oh, yeah. That way the camera gets.
That's your podium.
Even planted for my good side. But I just wanted to say good evening to to the Haldane Board, Superintendent Robano, and the community members that are here. I I'm Greg Brown. I'm the Assistant Superintendent at PNW Bosse's and it's really my privilege tonight to talk a little bit about one of our students, Casper, who's here with his family, who we're so proud of. As you may know, for more than 40 years, the mission of PNW Bosse's has been service and innovation through partnership. And we can't do any of that without all of you and without partnering with you and the families and the communities that we serve. So I just wanted to say we value the partnership. We thank you so much for helping us be a part of your students' experiences. And it's just so valuable. So with that being said, it's my privilege. I'm going to introduce, we had a little bit of a, we did rock, paper, scissors at the beginning. And so I'm going to introduce Mr. Kearns, who's Casper's English teacher, to say a few words about this young man. And again, thank you from PNW Bosse's.
Thank you.
Casper Daisley has been an exemplary student throughout his ninth grade year and has made a lasting impact on our campus through his academic excellence, collaborative spirit, and natural leadership. According to his teacher, Martin. Casper approaches his studies with exceptional diligence and intellectual curiosity. He consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic and a genuine passion for learning that sets a high standard for his peers. His thoughtful engagement in class discussions and his commitment to mastering complex material reflect his deep dedication to academic success. Equally impressive is Casper's collaborative nature. He thrives in group settings, contributing meaningfully while encouraging others to share their perspectives. His ability to listen actively and support the learning of those around him enhances the educational experience for his entire cohort. Beyond the classroom, Casper is passionate about the outdoors, has a part-time job working on a farm, and has great aspirations for the future. Whether through informal mentorship, group projects, or student government, he consistently models integrity, inclusivity, and initiative. Casper's presence enriches our school community and his influence is felt well beyond his academic contributions. For these reasons and many more, Casper Daisley deserves the title of Student of Distinction. He represents the very best of what we hope to nurture in our students: intellect, compassion, and a commitment to collective success.
Casper has the certificate Student of Distinction, which is awarded to Casper in recognition for your outstanding leadership skills, academic progress, community spirit. And then we have a medal, which is for excellence. On the back, we've got PNW Bosse's Student of Distinction. So congratulations on our work.
Alright, so we took a quick break to have some photographs to document that very special presentation, that Casper. Now, another special presentation, which is from Highland Electric Fleet. Do you want to do?
Yes.
Introduction?
Sure, sure. We have been working with Highland Electric for most, most of the school year. And we've made some really great progress on our initiative to to hopefully at some point in the future, transition to electric buses. So Pat Wareham and Emily Parish have been on site, we've met remotely, and they're going to give the board a brief overview of the work that has been done thus far and potentially some, how they can support us in the future if if some of our funding comes. So please welcome.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having us this evening. We're really excited to be here. I'm Emily Parrish. I'm a senior manager on the Fleet Solutions team at Highland, and I'm here with Pat Wareham. He's an associate online team. We will go through a brief presentation, try to keep it brief. There's a lot of information and, you know, we typically get a lot of questions, so we're happy to dive in and and answer. So I think, so we'll start off with a little bit of background about Highland and what we do as a partner. We'll dive into some of the potential economics of what what a project could look like, looking into the future as the district considers transitioning to an electric fleet. So the first few slides are really about Highland, what it, what we do, why we do it. So, um, Highland was really created to solve a lot of the complexities of going electric and make it simpler and more affordable for a district to transition. So this is kind of a graphic of an overview of what we do. So on the left side of the screen, you can see that, you know, their districts are really good at operating their fleets, getting their their students to school. They've been doing it for a long time. When you're looking at transitioning to electric, there's a lot of other things that you have to consider, right? How do you install charging infrastructure? How do you know what chargers to install? How do you ensure your vehicles are being charged every day? How do you pay for for these things? So Highland really assists, right, with kind of consulting, finding grants and funding sources. And then ultimately, as an implementation partner and a a long-term partner to ensure that these projects are successful. We work all over the country. We're headquartered in Beverly, Massachusetts, and have a big focus in the Northeast. This is a map of all of our projects. We have more than, you know, 40, 50 school district municipal partners at this point. A big part of what we do is support districts to apply for grants at, you know, no commitment to working with us, but we know grant funding and finding funding sources is a huge component of making this affordable. So that, you know, that thus far, that's what we've partnered with you all to apply for some grant funding. And we'll, we'll go through what that, what that could look like and, right, just scoping, understanding what it, what is required, working with the stakeholders to figure out what's required. So in terms of specifically for for the district here and other districts in New York State, there are a few different funding buckets when it comes to supporting transitioning to an electric fleet. You have the federal level through the EPA Clean School Bus Program. You have the state level. The state is really invested in, you know, districts transitioning as as there is a mandate to to transition. And a lot of the electric utilities in the state also have funding programs. So we've kind of looked at the available sources through all these programs. We have applied for some and we'll show you how how that really impacts what this project could cost. It really helps to pick, a lot of these funding sources help to pay down the high capital costs of going electric. Right, electric school bus is almost three times the cost of a diesel bus. And then you also have infrastructure you have to install. Specifically on the EPA program, we worked with Haldane to apply to the, they call, we call it the fourth round of funding. There's been five rounds. And, you know, we are very optimistic that that the funding will be awarded. But we are currently waiting to to see when that will be awarded. We're hoping it's over the next couple of months. And, you know, there's obviously been a lot of change which with the federal administration, but there's been no indication that they're nixing this program or not no longer planning to fund it. We have a big market development team that that works at Highland and we're, you know, we have, we're part of a big coalition and we're doing a lot of work in Washington to ensure these these funding sources are still available, as well as there are tax credits that we've incorporated into our pricing as well on the vehicle and on the infrastructure side. So we're focused on making sure this funding is is still around. So hopefully we get some news about that within the next couple of weeks. There's also a big program through New York State. It's a rolling program. There's a ton of funding available. So, you know, if if we move forward with this, we'll work with you all to apply for that program through the the bus dealership. And then there's utility funding as well. So your utility provider, Central Hudson, has a program that covers a certain percentage of the cost of the infrastructure. So a lot of this can get complicated, but we just try to kind of navigate it for our partners and ensure we're getting all the funding that that is available, right? And we can talk about how all these funding streams look in the overall economics of the project. To dive into what what Highland actually does as an implementation partner, right, we talked about some consulting, some grant, grant work. We typically partner with a school district or a municipality to provide a long-term services contract, usually eight, eight to 15 years. We'll talk about what the term length is in in New York State. But essentially, we provide equipment and services, as I mentioned, to make it easier and more affordable to go electric. So we provide the vehicles themselves built to your specifications. We don't manufacture the vehicles. We partner with local dealerships. And then we also implement the the infrastructure itself. So these are capital costs associated with an electrification project. Again, we use grant funding to reduce those capital costs and then we'll finance the remaining capital costs over this eight to 12-year contract. Again, to make it more affordable so that the district is not outlaying capital upfront in order to to implement this type of program. The goal is to have the contract length fit the life of the vehicle, right, so that you're just paying for it as you're using it over time. Along with these, you know, capital costs, we also provide services that support the operational side and it's kind of all packaged together. So on the services side, right, we're installing the charging stations and then we're maintaining them and making sure they operate for the entire length of the contract. The software is a super big part of making these types of projects successful. So we provide software. We teach you how to use it, how to manage it properly. We also typically provide the fueling itself, so we pay for your electricity and we we essentially fix your fueling costs for the life of the contract. The the kind of last bucket here, and this is a lot of information and sometimes, you know, it takes a little bit to digest. But the last bucket here is support on the vehicle maintenance side. So essentially, we provide a bumper-to-bumper warranty on the vehicles themselves, again, to make sure they work for the for those eight to 12 years. It's it's a performance-based contract in that sense, right, where our our job is to ensure you have electric vehicles that can take kids to and from school. And we kind of deal with all the complexities of managing the different vendors that are involved in in this type of program. So it's a little bit like a lease because you're you're kind of leasing buses, but you get a lot more than that. You get the infrastructure and you get, you get a lot of services. So in exchange for all of these things, a district typically pays us a fixed annual fee for the life of the contract. So you you know exactly what you're paying for, you know, the eight to 12-year period, which, you know, a lot of folks find attractive because you're you're obviously fixing your costs and you know how to budget for for this program over the long term. So that is essentially what we include. Our TESSA is a transportation equipment services agreement. That's what we call our our contract here. Let's see what else. So, um, I think I have a slide or two before I pass it off to Pat to talk details about the economics. But this, I think, is a good graphic of our services contract compared to, you know, right, you could go electrify on your own, you could purchase vehicles, purchase equipment, you would have a higher upfront cost, right? Because you'd have to fund those things and then obviously you'd have to, you'd have to maintain your vehicles. And, you know, a year five of the contract, maybe some of, or five of the the project, maybe one of your chargers totally go, doesn't work anymore and you have to replace it, right? So so in a in a world where you all electrify independently, you would have to, you know, deal with those types of costs and those types of almost like risks, operational risks. And with Highland, right, if a, to use that same example, if a charger breaks, we have to replace it. So you're, you know, with Highland, you're, you have, you know exactly what you're paying, you're, you have that yellow bar instead of kind of fluctuating costs. So this is just a, oh, I'm just checking. I have two more slides. Okay. So super quick Highland Project Team. So we just like this because it's a really good overview of, this is just like seven of the of the like 50 people that manage our projects after they're implemented. You have a customer support person. You have techs that come on site. You have energy people that work for Highland that are managing your charging. You have grant specialists to make sure we're complying with all the grant programs. So it's really a partnership where we're providing a high level of support to ensure that things are, things are running smoothly. And a quick note on our contract and where it stands in New York State. We basically worked like three and a half years to get our contract approved by NICE Ed in New York State, just because it's a little bit of a unique offering. But it has been approved and it is currently classified as a capital lease, even though there are services associated with it, right? And it is eligible for transportation aid, which is, which is great. And I think the other things on here is, you know, are just, you know, we might be getting ahead of ourselves, but just to put all the information out, out here, so everyone's aware. Our our understanding is our contract is subject to voter approval, but it really just depends on, you know, how the how the district typically gets these types of things approved. We're currently going through the process with another district. Our first in the state, right, we've worked kind of all over, but there's been, New York's a harder place to do business. So we're working through just the logistics of getting our contract done. And I think the last note here is the the current allowable lease is eight years, but there is a bill in the Senate that is being proposed to extend that to 12 and essentially give the flexibility to school districts to choose what what they want, right? Because we feel, we're confident the buses last more than eight years and we we, you know, are supporting being able to extend that lease so that, you know, it's just cheaper on an annual basis and you can spread out those costs over a longer period of time because the buses will last longer. So that's kind of a little bit of background about where we fit in New York and I will pass it off to Pat before I talk too much.
So I guess just one last point on the previous slide, right?
Yeah.
That extension term to 12 years, I think that's, our understanding is that would go into effect in the next year, so it'd be in 2026, just so we're all on the same page there. So Carl, I know you alluded to it earlier, but just for everyone's kind of context here, what's been going on behind the scenes. We were on site back in April, so several weeks ago, meeting with with Carl and Adam on the the Haldane side. And then we also had some folks from Central Hudson on the engineering side of things to come on site and and assess where we can specifically pull in power. So here's just an overview of of our proposed site plan. And so as far as installations go, pretty straightforward. We can pull power directly from the three, three-phase service line along Cedar Street, just up by the garage at the top of the hill. And then we'll be deploying four chargers, so one charger per bus. So very straightforward. The, I think the last note would be on the infrastructure side, we would be upsizing the the panel, the transformer, et cetera. So if there was a need, let's say in, you know, 2028, 2029, somewhere down the line, if you were looking to deploy another few chargers, we would have enough capacity for kind of that phase two, phase three, et cetera. So just wanted to call that out. The the next point, we want to dive into pricing and and just wanted to be, you know, very transparent in terms of like, hey, this is, this is indicative. At this point, we're still waiting on on final determination on a couple of variables. But we mentioned the EPA funding, right, which is definitely a critical driver in your project economics. The other couple of points are on the actual bus, final bus price from the dealer, from Leonard Bus, and then the final utility cost from Central Hudson, which is still in the kind of engineering study phase. We've included placeholders for each of those items, but just wanted to kind of set the table there in terms of, you know, what we're looking at. And then, right, made the distinction in terms of the, you know, EPA funding, you know, whether or not that's going to be awarded. So figured it would be best to present, you know, two different scenarios here. So Emily mentioned the kind of per bus, per year price that's listed at the top there. So we can expect anywhere from, you know, below 30s to, you know, high 30s, between $30,000 and $40,000 per bus per year. And so just multiply that by four would be the the annual payment, the TESSA payment. And then also some details in terms of the actual, you know, mileage. This is just an assumption that that we use based off of Haldane's routes that you run, you know, at each and every day. And on an annual basis, it's about, you know, a little under 11,000 miles. And what that is, right, we can always adjust up or down. It just gives us the ability to kind of price in that electricity cost. And so if you said, hey, we need 12,000, 13,000 miles, we can certainly do that. It's just would be reflected in the electricity rates. Emily, anything to add on the pricing side?
No, I don't think so.
And so the 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 model of per bus per year can be a little abstract. And so we like to also give a little bit more context in terms of what this may look like in comparison to, you know, what you're currently paying or at least predict what that would look like if you were to go with buying new diesel buses. And so we're taking the angle of looking at the total cost of ownership over a long period of time. And so this is certainly a bit of a high-level analysis here. But really, the idea is that, you know, probably a little cliche, but there's no real crystal ball into the future. You know, maybe you can predict what your, you know, diesel costs look like next year. Five years out, it's pretty difficult. 10 years out, even more difficult. And so the idea is that, you know, there's a scenario where everything goes perfectly according. Um, and so the idea is that, you know, there's a scenario where everything goes perfectly according to plan. Um, diesel uh prices remain pretty constant um in in, you know, your maintenance issues don't really pop up. There's also the scenario where uh, you know, diesel prices spike, let's say in in three or four years from now. Um, and, you know, maintenance becomes more and more of a burden. Um, and so the reality is, it's just really difficult to to assess where you're going to be. But in terms of that total cost of ownership, um, ten, twelve years of uh of owning a diesel bus. And, you know, not really to put too much of a sales hat on, but. That's kind of where the beauty of the Highland contracts is, and that's why a lot of customers um really appreciate this. You know, hedging of uh the future in terms of uh predictable budget cycles. And so it just gives you kind of this uh fixed, you know, dollar figure that you can point to in the annual budget cycle um year over year. Um, and that's what you're gonna have.
And we have, I'll just mention, we have like more numbers that feed into this analysis in the back of the deck. And we also can do spreadsheets and really dive dive deep, just wanted to give the high level for the presentation.
Some of our customers really love to get super granular um in terms of like looking diving really deep into the weeds um on a spreadsheet. And so we're we're always happy to do that, just really cater to to what folks are interested in.
So can you go back for a second? So you've got, so first of all, what does I stand for?
Internal combustion engine, so should have specified that.
So. That's good, so you have two projections, right, a low diesel volatility, right, the idea that diesel costs. Increased but stay relatively same. Increased but stay relatively stable, right? And then a high diesel volatility, which is there anything that's happened? I mean, I guess their gas prices have really fluctuated quite a bit over the past five years, that that was that base? I mean, what do we have? What do we have to suggest that that's a a realistic scenario, but even a possible scenario?
Sure.
That's one question, and the other question is, you say projected savings diesel versus Highland, but you're not, you you don't specify. Which comparison are you making, are you making Highland compared to low diesel volatility? Or Highland can the Highland service contract compared to high diesel volatility? I don't know what 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 the direction that savings is.
Yeah, um, happy to address that, so. Um, just to be clear, this total cost of ownership includes the cost of the. The vehicle itself, right, in in electric world, its infrastructure. And then it's um both maintenance and and fuel costs. So if you look at just like an individual bus, right, there could, you have diesel diesel volatility, the fuel cost itself, right? Um, you could take a stance, you think it's going to increase two percent, right? You think it's going to go down. Um, also on the maintenance top side, it's it's important to consider um some of the costs there, right? It if it could fluctuate in terms of like what, you know, you could get a diesel vehicle from a dealer that's like. Has some issues and the the maintenance over time is super expensive, right? Um, so it kind of, it just varies based on how that vehicle performs or, you know, maybe. Uh unforeseen things come up that that change the cost of of maintenance. There's parts shortages where you can't get parts and you have to outsource them separately. Um, so that's a, that's another big component there. Um, and then, right, the savings, obviously Highland based on low volatility, you're not, you're not achieving savings. So that is just, right, it's supposed to be up to, so in a, depending on how you view the projections. You could be achieving savings up to those figures. So, right.
But it's, but that's, I just want to be clear that that comparison, it's a comparison between Highland and the high diesel volatility assumption. Not the low diesel volatility, okay, that's what I meant to say.
Yeah, and Pat showed some of the assumptions we had, right? And really, the point is that these are, you know, this is based on some data we've. We've um obtained from a lot of districts in in the region that we've seen. But of course, it it really depends on what, how you guys feel and how you view the future. So it's really just a basis for uh to understand, like a framework to understand how to leave comparison, right?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, so we purchase our energy the same way we purchase diesel, right? We get a municipal discount discount, correct? And then uh Central Hudson, so there's volatility in the diesel market, but there's not really volatility in the Central Hudson market. It goes up. Central Hudson always asks for more money.
Yeah.
Okay, is that built into, like, I have an electric car and I save money-ish. Um, because we pay a lot for electric here in this spot, ain't cheap.
Yeah.
So I I noticed you don't have a lot of New York State. But you gotta be running those numbers off of what the average cost of electric is, but. You know, I noticed you had Texas, and Texas has some cheap, pretty cheap oil, uh, pretty cheap electric. But this area of New York, because of Central Hudson, actually has pretty expensive power.
Yeah.
Uh, it's pretty aggravating and it's going in one direction. So, man, I, so number one, your projection is based off of Central Hudson's. Current news, okay, so that's good, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Um, current number, though they just put in, they just want another five percent. So, I mean, you know, of course they do, so then um. That right there, so the way I look at it, without driving the bus at all. So if if we didn't move the bus. We pay a service fee. Of. Like, we pay a hundred sixty thousand, a hundred seventy thousand dollars to not even drive the bus? Is that roughly what that is saying?
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure.
So think about the cost, so we buy a bus, right, it's two hundred thousand dollars, we just put in for a bus, for a diesel bus, right? Yeah? Yeah, but and then um. And, you know, we've got our fuel cost, but and and we service our buses at. Okay, and then we, you know, I mean, then we get the discount on the fuel, okay? Because we don't pay the taxes, right? Um. And so. You know, the money savings, whether or not we hit that or not, it's, so this is a pretty significant outlay. To not drive a bus at all, and then to ideally get it back, but then you said it was adable.
It is adable, so.
What's that rate? Thirty percent rate? Yeah, you don't want to, we don't have, but you have that adable rate and that is included in that.
No, we we do not know your rate, so you would you would add that to this cost, yeah.
Well, we'd, well, we would, well, we'd subtract it from the, okay, so we would lower that cost. But you're, right now, you have a bus voucher rate of two hundred twenty one thousand dollars per bus. If we get, because it looks like the state is gonna pull up what the EPA is letting go.
Not 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 all of it, but some of it.
Yeah, but it's, right?
Yeah.
But you just told him, so we just paid out, or we, you know, it's a hundred sixty thousand per bus, possibly with tariffs, it's up to two hundred thousand. Then. Your bus is six hundred thousand, is that one to three? How much is a bus?
A bu- a bus is four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, so so that's where the grants come in, right? We're really, we're really lowering the capital cost of the bus itself.
And that's, and that's a bus that lasts for, and that's a bus that lasts for twelve years.
Yes.
Inclusive of the battery.
Inclusive of the battery.
We're guaranteeing that, yeah.
And our buses average how many years? Ten to twelve years because of salt.
Yeah.
Not because of the, because of the salt, the rust.
Yeah, so it's right, instead of paying a hundred sixty thousand dollars to buy a new diesel bus.
Yeah.
You're paying us, right, like thirty, thirty five thousand dollars in year one. So so you have savings in year one, right? And then the comparison after year one is um, right, we're financing the cost of the vehicle. And then it's your fueling and your maintenance costs after that.
Yeah.
The only other thing, question I went, oh, did you have a question, Michelle, before I did this?
Um, I guess, just to make sure I am clear, so it's kind of more like a lease, after twelve years. We're not, and and our contract's up, we're not keeping the bus, then it's like there's a trade in?
Yeah, there's, there's a few different options. Um, typically, we provide a buyout for the for the vehicle. Um, just to get into specifics, it has to be, it's a fair market value buyout, that's how we can take tax credits, which are baked into the pricing. Um, or, right, after twelve years, you might, the, there might not be any value to the bus, right? So you want to get a new one, um, you want to start a new contract, you want to purchase the charging infrastructure from us and do this on your own. So there's a lot of different options after twelve years, but, right, like realistically, there's going to be very little value to a twelve year old bus for you all. So we might not, we might not really want it at that point.
Electric doesn't have great resale to begin with.
Okay.
Because it's not like an engine, you know, it's it's that comes out of the battery.
Mm-hmm.
The um. That that you just pointed out something important, and it just almost just floated out of my head, but sixty miles per day. Um, our sports, this can't be for our sports buses.
This is an average of our in in district transportation, it includes our, no, included our sports trips, so.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Section one's a big section, this thing's a beast.
We're averaging out too, you know, some trips that are short.
Yeah.
So, so uh, the range of of these vehicles is about a hundred twenty miles. In a like normal weather conditions, when it gets really cold, it becomes more like ninety.
Ninety.
Um, we would never recommend a district to fully transition their fleet, you know, overnight. You need, you need diesel vehicles to be able to drive long trips, but, you know, mo- in most cases, the in-house. AM PM routes are a perfect use case for for electric, because you can, you know, they're back in the middle of the day in case they need some some. Um, extra charging, which we all manage by software. Um, so, yeah, so we would never, you know, recommend to to electrify your fleet all at once. Because, yes, there are instances where this this isn't going to work for for every type of use.
Can I ask one more question? So the, so this is based on an assumed contract term of twelve years. Earlier, you all said currently New York State actually is only approving eight year contracts.
Yes.
And so if that were the case, and New York State isn't going to change, like, how would that difference a twelve? So a twelve year contract right now is impossible, you're hoping it becomes possible. What what happens if 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 New York State decides, no, we're going to do eight year contracts?
Yep, so the pricing would increase because you're just not able to spread those additional capital costs over twelve years. You would just be able to spread them over age.
Yeah, and and just to give a ballpark, would anticipate it being in like the of like fifteen hundred range, so like.
Fifteen hundred, not fifteen thousand, should be a little.
Fifteen hundred.
Per bus per year.
Per bus, yeah, that makes sense, yeah, okay, okay.
But yeah, shorter financing term, so.
And I guess one thing I'm not clear on either is that, so the way I've always thought about these EPA grants is that they would help Haldane buy electric buses. But instead, this sounds like this is assuming that, say, the the EPA grants were awarded. That the grant actually really doesn't help us buy a bus, it helps us offset the cost of this. These, this service contract.
You, yeah, go ahead.
I I just to frame this.
That's a thing that's.
Yeah, I I think, yeah, we probably need to be more clear on that, the the district basically has no obligation to Highland election.
Sure, sure, sure.
So they have worked with us on the EPA grant. Um, we haven't started the NICE Serta because in my judgment, you probably want EPA and NICE Serta money. To get to the price point that you're looking for. But they also facilitate, they're very helpful in um getting um Hudson, um, uh, Central Hudson here on site. Because we were concerned, we we may need to run power from like nine D, which would be very costly, so. They've been incredibly helpful, they've charged the district nothing. And there is no obligation, so I do believe that if the funding comes through, the district has has a. You know, option of going at it alone.
Yes.
But there's risk there, uh, and especially because there are a lot of unknowns with with electric buses. The way I see it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you kind of provide more of a safety net. You know, there's a fixed expense, you know, if if we could see into the future, maybe. Going with the option of Highland Electric as as a partner. Over time, could be more expensive, we don't know for sure. But there is some peace of mind knowing we have the full support with our first transition to electric, is that, does that answer?
Yeah, it it definitely does, but I think my question is um. More about, just the EPA funds can can apply to this, that was my most recent question. Because I always understood them as, oh, how they end up, how they's applied for this grant. To help us offset the cost of purchasing buses, right, which remains an option and y'all are an option and that. But but and but it sounds like even if if the grant were awarded. It's allowable to transfer the money to, yeah.
Yeah, we've done it with, yeah, with the water.
Oh, great, thanks.
Yeah, and if, right, if you didn't get this funding, maybe this is clear, our, right, our price would be like double, it might be like seventy thousand dollars, right? Because it's just, there's a lot of other capital costs. Without any grant funding, without EPA.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so just one more, just kind of clarification, so in my mind, we're running obviously kind of two bus garages, an electric bus garage and a. And a diesel bus garage, Adam, Adam's responsible for the diesel bus garage, and then you guys are responsible for the electric bus garage.
So we don't actually perform the maintenance, we partner with your dealer.
On the buses, that is, on the charger, on the chargers, we would.
Okay.
So we partner with the dealer because they have, they have technicians um that are certified to work on the buses. And then we provide training in partnership with the dealer to train any staff that work in-house to perform maintenance. Um, and then we really provide, so we provide, we facilitate that training to ensure. If you have people in-house, if they want to work on the buses, they can, otherwise the dealer will work, will maintain them. Um, so.
So what's that service fee?
So it's a, it's an, it's a full bumper to bumper extended warranty.
Okay, gotcha.
So we reimburse you for everything you do on the bus.
Right.
Um, at a, at a labor rate that we agree on and at and at parts cost. So where it's really beneficial is, for example, for a battery, right?
Yeah.
Those cost a hundred thousand dollars to replace, so so we have to replace it if if something goes. Wrong outside of the manufacturer's warranty, so it's an extension, right, to make sure that it lasts twelve years beyond. What the manufacturer actually provides in terms of warranty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry for the questions.
We're, we're happy.
Yeah.
I'm just curious about the training and education package, do you train Adam one time and that's it? Or do you, do the drivers need training or like, say, somebody replaces Adam at some point, not that, I hope that happens at all, ever? Um, but like, I guess what's involved, what's the package include?
Yeah, it's really customized, like, we are very flexible depending on what you guys want. But typically, we provide definitely annual driver staff training, if there's any new drivers. Um, that happens, right, when the vehicles arrive, we make sure everyone's comfortable, and then we could do it on a. A annual cadence every summer when there's other training going on. We could do it quarterly if people feel like they need more support. We find that the drivers, once they've been on the bus for like, they've been driving for three or four days, they they get it. It's, right, so we want to make sure that they're comfortable, and if, you know, there, especially if there's new drivers, we need to make sure they're comfortable. Um, but there isn't like an immense amount of training needed. Um, we train Adam and his staff on the software as well, and anyone, you know. Maybe you have a sustainability person that wants to pull emissions data from the software, we'll train, you don't know how to do that. And then we have a huge repository of like on on-demand training as well. So, you know, we have a training specialist come, we we really tailor it to to what you all want to do there.
Yeah, and we can circulate some, like, kind of like a overview of what the the training entails and like who, like, you know. Just we we have that available, so.
Yeah.
There's a lot of ongoing support.
Uh, I'm gonna stay optimistic, we we were hoping we would have find a word from the EPA for this meeting. But we don't, and we're hearing maybe a couple of weeks, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. If everything goes well and we get it, can you give us an idea of timing and when the district would need to start making decisions? For example, if the district wants to go at this independently versus partnering with Highland Electric? And then also, you you're you're out there working with, I know a number of districts. Um, can you talk to us about the timing of of realistically obtaining electric buses?
Yeah.
Because I do understand there are some supply chain issues.
Yeah, um, so one piece of that, I think, is procurement, so. A lot of folks have procured our contract via Sourcewell, it's a cooperative contracting agency. A lot of folks have procured our contract via Sourcewell, it's a cooperative contracting agency. Uh, some districts go out for for a bit, right, they want some some other ideas in the market. What we're happy to support, anything you all wanna do there in terms of procurement. I think the other piece is what's required by New York State Ed to approve, for your district to approve the contract as a capital lease. Um, which I think everyone is learning the the process there. Um, so that, to me, that is a bigger piece. Um, on on timing, right, cause we're we're past this year's budget cycle, so maybe that's a next year. In May um conversation, right, but it takes, it obviously takes several months leading up to that to make sure everything's in place. To go ahead there, um, the EPA does have typically like implementation deadlines. It's typically two years from award, so that should give you enough time. The the actual implementation of the project, say, you know, we we. Um, make all this work and we get a contract, and then it's about ten to fourteen months to actually. Get everything in place for the buses to be up and running. Um, there are some kind of big lead time items like the bus itself. Um, and some electrical equipment items, right, we focus on ordering those right away. So that we're staying on track to do construction and have everything implemented. So in that case, right, the two year implementation implementation deadline typically works out fine, cause you. You know, it takes the district six, eight, ten months to to actually like get to a plan, and then it takes, you know, about a year to. Before you see the see the buses on the road. Um, I think I answered most of those questions.
Yes.
Great.
So I think, yeah, the takeaway is is really, I think, working on kind of working backwards from that May twenty twenty six. Um, date in terms of the kind of the budget uh approval.
Um, capital votes don't necessarily have to be in May. Like a a district for something like this could hold a capital vote, especially for something like this, like.
Yeah.
Really, I mean, I I don't think there's. In the fall, I mean, really anytime, it's just the cost, it's the, there's costs associated with and planning, we, you know, with. Holding the, you know, holding the. Like that, but we can do it really anytime, it definitely. That doesn't have to be May.
Yeah.
Just one more question, I was looking at the numbers, it doesn't seem like there's any um. Scaled up savings, meaning like, you know, you you see that you see basically the savings. On one bus, it's the same structured savings on four buses.
The way we model it, yes, because we, so there are fixed costs on the infrastructure, right, so if you were just doing. Two buses, there'd be like a fixed fixed cost on the infrastructure only spread across two buses. If you commit to doing four, you're spreading that across four buses. And on a per bus basis, it becomes cheaper, so if we looked at this project and just priced two buses, it would be more expensive. Or just price one bus, it would be, it would be expensive, cause you're you have to pay that, a bunch of that infrastructure cost anyway.
Well, it'd be, it would definitely be a less dollar amount, there's no way the infrastructure cost is the same as.
Sure, but to, right, I'm saying like to break, the utility has to bring in a certain amount of minimum power anyway. And you have to, you still have to dig the same trench, no matter how many buses you have, so so those are the specific costs, but yes. On a scale, it's lower than the four hundred thousand dollar bus. It's like, infrastructure typically costs like twenty to fifty thousand dollars per bus. Um, so. It it has some impact on the overall cost, but yeah, not not as much.
So you all are even recommending that it to do the electrical work, especially given the fact that right now, New York State is. Hasn't deviated from the fact that they're planning to. That you wouldn't, you wouldn't build, you probably wouldn't build the infrastructure for one bus, you'd build the infrastructure for this. Which is, I think, what you all were recommending, right, like you'd think about, like, you'd bring in this amount of electricity, definitely support the four buses, but to think about. Like, what a phase two or phase three would be like, yeah.
Yeah, cause it's such minimal, like, additional cost to just. Bring in a little bit of extra conduit to serve the other chargers, you might as well do that at the same, at the same time, yeah. To to plan a little bit for for the future.
I think we got you all off your rhythm of the presentation.
Through the last two pages anyways.
Yeah.
Essentially, just the the kind of sample timeline, which we already touched on, and um just procurement, which um. I believe Haldane is is a member of Sourcewell, so it just kind of helps um avoid just the 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 RFP process, right? Just uh being able to go through the cooperative program there. Um, but that's all, that's all the material that I think we have prepared, but happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, don't mind uh our skepticism, we have, we've, in our in our community, we've had multiple electric providers, right? Where they're gonna flatten out our costs, Peggy or on the same power, and then it just evaporated, so. It's um, you know, it's.
Well, at the risk of asking it, I mean, a a hard question, but a question that the board needs to ask is. So you all are an organization, I assume you're a for-profit organization, right, like companies can go out of business, like what what what? Like, so what, and it's a pretty new field, I've, you know, it sounded like you're working with. What'd you say, for like forty or fifty districts throughout the country, right? You've been doing this for a little while, but you know, what 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 happened in the worst case scenario, right, like? I guess, and maybe this is too technical, but like, you know, if we get this money from the EPA. Right, that's supposed to offset the cost of our having our electric. You know, of having electric buses, and I know these are much bigger conversations need to happen, but I think that's a pretty. I can imagine somebody in the community asking like, well, what? Because we have never outsourced our transportation, right, I mean, it's been a real sort of source of of of. Not just pride for the district, but the district has done a very good job of buying buses, maintaining buses. We've had members of our community who have maintained these buses, I mean, it really. Been a, it's that it's been a big cost saver for the district, for us to do this. And so this is a, this is a different kind, you you all talk about the risk of going it alone, but this is another kind of risk. How do you all answer that question in a few minutes, and I?
Yeah, of course. Um, so there's like really technical ways to get into like how our contract structure, which I can do in in thirty seconds. So we have investors that fund, right, their high capital cost projects, so we have to fund them. Um, they approve every single contract that we sign onto, so they, you know, they own. Own the contract essentially, and it's a performance-based contract, they have to adhere to what's in the contract. Otherwise, you know, if things are not working, the buses, right, say Highland. Say in a world Highland disappears, your contract still exists, because we form an LLC for each of our projects to get really technical. Which is beneficial for each district, because it 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 insulates you from other projects. Um, so in order to keep that LLC going, it's funded by your contract payments. Um, so that is, the LLC structure is a really beneficial thing for a school district, and then our investors, right? If Highland goes away, we're we're the operator, they would need to adhere to the contract, right, otherwise. You know, if they're not doing what the contract says, it would be in default, and you'd be able to get out of the contract, so. Maybe they find another operator to take over the contract, but right, like, it's a it's a meaty contract that. That needs to be followed, otherwise you have rights to to get out of there, right? And I think high level to a way to look at it is, right, you're not investing upfront capital into the project, so you're you're paying annually. To use a bus, so you know, in a in a worst case scenario, after five years, something happens to us. You would have paid for five years of operating costs, you wouldn't have sunk, you know, capital into a project and then. You know, not had had buses, so I think I think that's how we would answer it, if that makes sense.
I mean, actually, there's definitely a lot more.
My 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 assumption is you own the bus, or Highland.
They do own.
Or Highland Highland LLC of Cold Spring. Would would effectively own the bus. Then if you went under, then we could, because we don't own the bus. We could. Turn, we we would be able to, you know, sue for breach or whatever, be able to get out of it.
Yeah, and and there's, you know, there's things we could put in the contract that protect you all, right, like it's part of the part of. The negotiation, um, yeah, at that point, but, yeah, cause one of the reasons we. Bus ownership, as I mentioned, is the tax credits, cause it's much harder for the. For a a district to take advantage of those tax credits, cause you're not a taxpaying entity. So that's why we, that's why we own them, cause it's an economic, it's an economic benefit, and. The outsourcing question, we totally, we totally understand that, and I think, right, it's it's kind of a hybrid, we're not. Right, they're transportation contractors that drive the bus, and you're fully outsourcing the fleet, we're not doing that, we're not. There's, there's no intention to come in and change your operations, right, you're still driving the bus, you can do whatever you want with the bus. We can never take the bus and use it for something else, so I think that's that's the way, I totally understand the concern, but that's the way to look at it, right, like. We're we're supporting the electrification component and and providing some economic support, but we're not, we're not. Proposing that we're taking over the operations.
Can you share with us some of the districts in in our region that that you are working with and partnered with?
Yeah, um, in in New York specifically, we're going through a little bit of a process with Scarsdale, um, there. There are a little bit of our guinea pig here, um, but they're super interested in electrification, so we're. Um, you know, our contract was included in their budget, and now they're, we're working through through the contract. Um, I think that's the main one right now.
High Park, we did a charger charger installation with High Park, um, so this off the river.
Yeah, they have a lot of um trouble with community support for their for their electrification. Yeah, and so it's a, it's a pretty mixed bag, we're also, we've, we're working with some um districts out on Long Island. Um, there's some port, some support there, and also uh private transportation contractors is another group that we work with. Cause like fifty percent of New York State outsources their fleet.
But they're still gonna need electric buses.
That's also, that's also something we're focused on, working with those transportation contractors as well.
Yeah, and in terms of like customer referrals, right, we, that's something that we we do quite often, right, if if folks on your team were interested. In talking to, you know, active Highland customers, be happy to put you in touch.
Yeah, that's great.
We took up a lot of your time.
To be honest, I um I had started to look at this slide deck, and I realized I didn't really understand it, so it was really great. To have it presented like this, so thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
And Adam's been, but there's still, that was really interesting, I mean, there's a, there's, I feel like I have this whole new body of things. I have to understand there now. Uh, and thank you again for all the work, Pearl, that you've done on this this year, it's really. Uh, it's really, it's really great. All right, so communication from the public. Um, I I always read it, so I'm gonna read it anyway, so the Haldane Board of Education desires and values inputs in the entire school community. This first public comment session, it was a comment, send any special presentations or active agenda items. For any and one who wanted to address the board, we'd ask you to sign your name, sign in and say your name, and to keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Uh, we discourage disparaging remarks and the discussion of district personnel. Um, okay, so next we have on the agenda our information reports. For us to hand to review before we act on them at what will be our, um, I guess, the live first meeting. And then, and then we have the, next is the committing minutes. For the district-wide uh safety team, so thanks to that group for the important work that they do. Um, and, oh, who takes those minutes? I'm just curious.
It's from safety, it's usually me, although I happen to not be at this meeting.
Okay, I, it would be good to see, I I I don't know if I haven't noticed it before, but it's. The the minutes didn't include who was at the meeting, yes, would be a useful thing to have.
It normally is.
I think it is normally, okay, that makes sense, okay. So next we have consent agenda for the minutes from the May twentieth meeting, um. May, have a motion please.
So moved.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have the consent agenda financial, may we have a motion please?
So moved.
I just ask on this one.
We need a second.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yes, anything people would have?
There's just, uh, you know, lots of um material regarding Haldane and Garrison. Uh, contracts and agreements, and just, um, again, being a new member, just curious if there's anything to be flagged. Uh, is there anything new or drastically different from one, from, you know, last year to this year?
No, I think what's new is that we were putting everything on at one time, which I actually think is really great, I mean, one of the things I even wanted to say. Once we had put this, brought this up for discussion, is that I think, I actually, the fact that we have these multiple. Agreements between Garrison and Haldane, so it's. Uh, the instructional agreement for the high school students, uh, transportation related to to uh modified sports. Um, shared services agreement for the twelve one one, the special class of that the Garrison runs. And um, bore our. Director of. Uh, people personnel services and that person's assistant, so to support um Garrison CPSE. I think really speaks to really reminding me at least, I think, the the the. The strong collaboration there is between the two districts, so it's all, all of these are things that we've had in the. Is that we're putting them all on at at once, um, at this time in the school, yeah, at in the school year, but I think, I think it's a. An important reminder about um, about really the the deep collaboration that exists. Between the school districts, this is how I personally would raise it, with sports, with 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 two different approaches for supporting. Um, students, uh, sort of our diverse learners, um, as well as the, um, as well as. You know, high school students coming in from Garrison, um, which is, I think, valuable for both communities.
Yeah, we currently, and you know, fifty-six Garrison students are currently enrolled in at Haldane, which is phenomenal. Uh, we, you know, that's, those are our students, and we really appreciate it, we've even shared a superintendent.
The tuition information is in here too, which has always been sort of a separate, different type of discussion in the past, so it's nice to have it in. It's earlier than it has been, and I think that's, I think we sort of deserve a little bit of, um, you know, we attention, it 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 helps both schools with their budget. But this, I just wanted to flag that the tuition that we're looking at for the high school students, it's actually for the eighth graders for next year, so. We do that in advance, right, to sort of, to sort of help out budgets, but that's something, it's nice to be able to sort of look over the numbers and. You know, make sure everything's copacetic in terms of our finances as well, but it is a year ahead, so I had, I looked at it, and I'm like, I had to. Ask you a question about that.
And I, and I think the thought process there is, um, sniffiness here, starting, I think, October, November-ish. We do um open house, right, for for Garrison students, I think a parent information session for parents. So that happens in the fall, um, with the eighth grade cohort, so to have this, you know, established. Just, you know, ensures that, you know, um, those students, you know, have this option of of coming here. And um, yeah, as 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 we're points out, um, you know, we went up by about six students here over a year, which which is. You know, I I think a real positive thing for us. Um, also, I would just, Michelle, you did ask earlier, is anything new, the transportation. Uh, agreement is is new, and it's not a financial thing, it's it's more of just a legal thing, protecting both districts. Uh, modified sports merges have gone on for probably more than a half century between uh Garrison and Haldane. And we've always more or less worked out transporting students back and forth in the most convenient way. So both districts have transported other districts' students. other district students, and it's never been formalized, so for liability purposes, both the Garrison attorney and our attorney, uh, suggest, suggested that we have a formal agreement in place, so that, that'll become an annual renewal that we can transport one another's students.
We should clarify that, that is, that was. Um, all right, so for the consent agenda, financial, all of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is consent agenda, uh, personnel, I don't think there's anything, um, that we need to note about this, uh, oh, first, but though, may I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second?
Um, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, next on the agenda is unfinished business, so finishing our policy review for, um, policy twelve-ten, the board members nomination and election first. Oh, well, board members and election, right, which is now adding this to, uh, include, um, the ex officio student a board member and, um, the fifty-six-eighty-five maximum temperature. So these are what we talked about last time.
Hmm.
Thanks very much to Megan for implementing the conversation we had about the process that we wanna implement for, um, having students join us. Uh, knowing that there's bigger conversations for us to have to make sure that we are able to support those students' engagement in meaningful ways.
Hmm.
Um, oh, maybe we have the right, after, when we have the recommended action.
It resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby adopts the following Haldane Central School District policies as attached, twelve-ten and fifty-six-eighty-five.
You have a motion please?
So moved.
Second? Is there anything else folks wanna say about these? I should have waited, my discussion. Thanks to you all for putting it all together.
Yeah.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, new business, the CSE CPSE recommendations, may we have the recommended action please?
It resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
You have a, a motion please?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next is a discussion, uh, for our next meeting, the tenure recommended recognition start time. Um, we, I'd already announced it at the beginning.
Just wanted to make sure everybody's.
But I, I realize we haven't necessarily cleared it, but.
That is what we did last year.
Sorry about that.
How dare you.
Does it work? Just, does six fifteen work for you?
Six fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just.
Yeah, yeah.
Great. Okay, that's, um, and that, and we have uh, an opportunity for, so we will begin at fifteen on seventeen. Um, a second opportunity for communication from the public. Um, and then board reflections.
I have one simple thing, I had the opportunity to go to the section one softball sports award dinner, and, um, two of our students won great awards, one was Kelly Sniffin, won a Diamond Nine Plus One Award, which recognized not only her achievements on the field, but also high, uh, achieving GPA, um, SAT scores, extracurriculars, so there was only a handful of kids that got that, and Kelly got one, so that's a big, that's a big deal, and Lainey was a, uh, Lainey Donahue was a league player of the year.
Great.
Yeah.
Good, I'm glad you got to go to that.
Allegra.
Don't check it.
Allegra was also, um, pitcher of the league. Um, as an eighth grader, she won the.
Oh, that's a legal shirt. I'm about to go to some girls' basketball game.
That was three ball.
Softball, that's what I meant.
Those are the basketball games you're going to.
He forgot.
They're worth.
Three awards, three, yes, I meant to say softball. All right, and, um, I wanted to say, so first, I have to acknowledge that before our last meeting, I had not done a thorough job of reading all of the information reports from the administrative team. And later that week, I was reading them, and I was so impressed. I was so impressed when we saw everything at the building levels, everything that all the principals were doing to make sure that students had, at, at every level, we're having really exciting um, culminating end-of-year events. Um, all the work that Dr. Cassian was doing, all the things that were happening with sports. You know, Adam speaking about all the work that he's doing, the work that Josh was doing, I mean, really, it was so, it was so impressive. Um, I actually reached out, I, I was sorry that I hadn't read them carefully enough for that night because I thought it just spoke so highly of everything that's going on. Um, and, uh, there's so much good information, I just, um, everyone in the district that gets like the, the, the Horizons newsletter gets to see all the great things that happen, but I, I still wanna think about ways to share with the broader community about all the fantastic things that happen um, at the district on a, on a weekly basis.
Yeah, sports award, uh, varsity sports awards is tomorrow, and then there is right after that, a PTA strawberry fest.
Yes.
Which is really.
Yes, yeah, really great.
And then, you know, then it's just, I'm on Friday, right, so this is a very busy time of year.
So much going on. Much appreciated. Anybody have anything else? All right. Do we, are there no thoughts from you, Mr. Almorno?
Nope.
So, um, the board is going to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history, uh, particular individuals, so um, and no action will be taken at this executive session, so I am actually making a motion that we convene into executive session, may I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, the, the board will, um, adjourn from executive session, all right.